Woo, here we are again. How is everybody tonight? Thank you so much for joining us for 20 for 2020. 20 looks at the book of Revelation, 20 sessions in the book of Revelation for 2020 hindsight vision, or not hindsight, but 2020 vision for the year 2020. If you ever look back and go, "Man, I wish I could have done something different." Because you can see behind you, you have that hindsight, you know, we all say hindsight is 2020. What we are gonna do is we're learning to, to look ahead with 2020 vision with clarity. And so, uh, thank you for joining us. This is session three of 20 for 2020. Uh, we're in the book of Revelation singular, the revelation of Jesus Christ. The five first words are the most important in the book, Revelation 1:1, the revelation. So this is session three. If you missed our first two sessions, you can find them on our website, whitestonechurchtx.com. You can find them on our YouTube channel, Whitestone Church TX YouTube. And you'll see our 20 for 20 sessions. And so, thank you so much for joining us. God bless you. If you want notes, uh, we have notes for each night. If you want notes, uh, we'll email them to you. Just email us at our website, whitestonechurchtx.com. Go on there, contact us. We'll be happy to forward you, uh, any notes or supplemental material that we have uh, for your own study. So we love you. Thank you so much for being here. Let's pray. And, uh, we'll get started. Father God, we love you and God, we bless you. And we declare, God, that you are the great I am. You are the King of kings. You're the Lord of lords. You're the, the first, the last, the Alpha, the Omega, the beginning, the end, the author, the finisher. God, you are in control. You're the Redeemer. You're the Lamb. You're the lion of the tribe of Judah. Father, we bless you and God, we ask that right now you would come uh, into this time and that you would bless it, God, that your word would jump off the page, that your word would go from our mind and sink into deep into our spirit. That God, it would not just be knowledge, but God, we would know you like never before. So Father God, we come against fear. We come against anxiety. We come against stress, God. Uh, we come against distraction. So Father God, we ask for your peace, your presence, your clarity in the mighty name of Jesus. And everybody said, "Come on, amen." Say it louder, amen. All right. God bless you. Revelation, chapter two, verse 18 is where we're picking up tonight. We've been talking the last two nights, uh, on chapter one about the beauty of Jesus, the name of Jesus, the power of Jesus, and that, that Jesus, uh, is coming back. A lot of people during this COVID-19, this coronavirus outbreak are truthfully asked, truly asking, "Hey, is Jesus coming back? Is this one of the end time flags?" Let me emphatically state this. The answer is yes. Jesus Christ is coming back. And what we're seeing on a global level, we've not seen this global impact, at least in my lifetime. We haven't seen this in a long time. We see a lot of regional, uh, we see a lot of regional issues like hurricanes or tsunamis or earthquakes, uh, or fires that hit a region. But this thing's global. Now, I'm not saying Jesus is coming back tomorrow. I'm not saying this is one of the trumpets or the seals or the bowls, but I am saying this is a labor pain. Jesus says there will be labor pains. There'll be nations rising against nations, kingdom against kingdom. Though there will be pain and tribulation before the return of Christ. And so, the answer is yes. Is it time to get right with the Lord? Absolutely. It's time today. Jesus could choose to come back tomorrow. He could choose to delay a hundred years. We don't know, but it's time for you to get right. And so, while we're in this shutdown, at least here in Travis County, we're on a shutdown uh, till April 30th, pretty much the whole nation. Uh, while we're on this shutdown, you have a choice. You can just kind of watch TV and, you know, be bored, or you can really get right with God, read his word and, and get educated on what God is saying. So Revelation, chapter two, verse 18. We're in the midst, uh, we're on the fourth church of the seven churches. So these seven churches, Jesus has a pattern. He starts the message to each church with a self-description. He describes himself to us. He then goes into a praise or accolade for that church. So he tells them, "Hey, listen, this is what you're doing." Then he goes into on five of the seven churches, what's called a nevertheless or a correction. He's saying, "Hey, listen, you gotta change this part of you. You gotta change this thing, or you'll miss the trajectory, or you'll miss your destination. If, if you're off base now, you'll be off base then. If you bow to sin today, you'll bow to sin tomorrow. So hey, nevertheless, let's make some corrections." Amen. So the nevertheless is the next thing. Then he'll have a, a, a reward or a, I'm sorry, an encouragement to the overcomer. So he'll say, "To the overcomer." So he gives us this, this prize, this, this award to, to race after. And then he tells us at the end, he, he says this to each of them. "He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches." So when you're reading Revelation, chapter two and three, it's talking to churches. But here's the neat thing, and here's the trap. Let me first say that. The trap is, is that we'll think that the churches are these buildings down the street or this denominational headquarters or this group of people. You are, my friend, the church. I'm the church. You're the church. We're the temple of God. We go to a building with other people, other churches, if you will. We go to a building and your building may have 50 people that meet on a Sunday morning or 5,000. It doesn't matter the size. It matters that we understand that the building is not the church. You and I are the church. So when Jesus is talking to the seven churches, he's talking to you and I in the condition of our heart. Now, he is talking here to seven real groups of believers. Those groups of believers existed when John wrote the book in 95 AD. These seven types of churches exist today in 2020. But if we're not careful, we'll read the book of Revelation and we'll point and we'll say, "Well, that group over there, or those denominational people over there, those, those weirdos over there that baptized that way, and those, those, those Christians over there that they don't know how to take communion, because they do it different in my church. And, and the way we take communion, it's the right way." If we're not careful, we'll fall into these traps of pointing the finger and saying, "Well, those people over there," Jesus is saying this to you and I, my friend. He's saying to us that we are the church and we have to get right with God today. So the seven churches that are listed here are not just these seven buildings around town. They're actually seven potential conditions of your heart. So just as if we were gonna take a trip and get on a, on an international flight and fly somewhere, we would go through TSA. We would go through the body scanner and we would do our hands like this and that thing would go around us. These seven churches, Jesus is, is X-reining our hearts. And if we took our heart and we said, "Look, God, would you judge my heart today? Would you, would you check out the condition of my heart?" We might find that our heart lost its first love, like the church of Ephesus. We may find out on the report card from Jesus, "Hey Cameron, remember how you used to just talk to me? And you didn't know a whole lot of Bible verses? You'd only been saved for a couple of weeks and you were still cussing and you were still telling dirty jokes and you were still thinking it was cool to, to smoke that or drink that, but you remember how pure your love was for me? And you just talked to me and you wanted to be with me and you would worship me and you didn't really care what anybody thought? Cameron, would you just return to that area of your heart? Because listen, you're doing a lot of works for me. But man, you don't get up early and just sit and drink coffee with me anymore. Man, you'd rather, you'd rather be on the cell phone seeing what people are doing on YouTube or Facebook than spend time with me. So God's saying to this church of Ephesus, "Hey, return to me." So my question is this simple. Is there a part of your heart that needs to return to Jesus? The second church, uh, that we talked about is Smyrna, and the church of Smyrna was persecuted. There's a lot of persecution going on in our world. It may not be happening in your neighborhood. But there's believers all over the world that are suffering greatly for Jesus Christ. There could be a period, an area of your life where you are taking a stand for Jesus. And he says, "Listen, don't quit doing that. The reward will be worth it." Listen, there'll be a crown of life, like Cassie and Rachel from Columbine High School. You gotta, you gotta listen to last night. That, those, those girls have won my heart. To the church of Pergamas, he says, "Hey, listen, you've compromised." Cameron, is there an area of your heart that's compromised? Listen, tonight, we're gonna dig into one of the, the darkest churches of the seven. It's the church of Thyretara. And so, we'll see the pattern. So I want you to have your pen and your paper and your Bible handy. Look with me to verse 18 of Revelation, chapter two. And just ask yourself before you read it, "God, does my heart look like this? Would this describe an area of my own life?" Just be willing to ask that question. All right? Here we go. "To the angel of the church in Thyretara," remember this, "that just because your pastor, your pastor is pastoring your church, but God also has an angel over your church." So every pastor, every church has a supernatural warrior, a supernatural pastor that God's positioned over that church also. "These things," says the Son of God. Here's the self-descriptive of Jesus. Jesus says, "This things, these things say, 'The Son of God who has eyes like the flame, a flame of fire and feet of fine brass.'" Listen, God sees right through us. He sees right through our works. He sees right through our facade. He sees right through our dressed up churchy clothes. He goes right to the heart. Amen. He's got feet like brass. He's been through the refiner's fire. He's so confident and bold. It doesn't matter where he walks or how he walks. He walks the same everywhere. He walks with peace and power. Amen. Verse 19, "Jesus says this to the church of Thyretara." And he's saying this to me and you. He says, "I know your works. I know your love, your service, your faith and your patience. And as for your works, the last are more than the first." Man, you're doing more for Jesus today than you did five years ago. You're going to church more consistently. You're tied to more. You're reading more devotionals. He knows your works. But he says this, he says nevertheless. Now, remember this nevertheless, it's not God beating this up. We talked about it yesterday. It's kind of like a, a married couple that's got some, you know, 90% of their marriage is good, but they go to a counselor because there's 10% of it that's just, it's just not right. And the counselor says, "Hey, listen, if we can't correct this 10% in 10 years, it could lead to divorce. So let's just make some corrections." So God says, "Nevertheless, Cameron, I have some things against you because you tolerate," say tolerate, "you tolerate that woman Jezebel who calls herself a prophetess." What? What are you talking about, God? To, listen, he says, "Nevertheless, I have a few things against you because you allow or tolerate that woman Jezebel who calls herself a prophetess to teach and beguile my servants to commit sexual immorality and to eat things consumed or sacrifice things, eat things sacrificed to idols." Man, that sounds familiar. He said the same thing almost identically to the church of Pergamas. He says, "Man, you got a problem. You're tolerating that Jezebel spirit and it's teaching my Christian sons and daughters to consume sexual pervert, or consume demon ideology, demon theology, and to act out in sexually perverted ways. Commit sexual immorality." Cameron, listen, you gotta stop these things, because if you allow sexual immorality in your life and you continue to consume demon theology, man, you're gonna miss me. You're gonna miss that. You gotta make this correction. We'll talk more about that in just a minute. Verse 21. "I gave her, Jezebel, time to repent of her sexual immorality, and she did not repent." There's that R-word. You gotta look in here at all the times repent is put, is put in Scripture. "Indeed, I'll cast her into a sick bed and those who commit adultery with her into great tribulation." Write that word down, because we'll talk about the tribulation further in the book of Revelation. But he says, "I'll throw those into great tribulation unless they repent." It's the third time he's used it in two verses. "Unless you repent of your deeds, I will kill her children with death and all the churches shall know that I am he who searches the minds and hearts. And I will give to each one of you according to your works." Man, there's that W-word again, works. God cares about your works. He saved you by grace, but he saved you to go work for him. There's a job God needs you to do. So here's the nevertheless. Jesus says you tolerate that woman Jezebel. Well, what does that mean? Well, we gotta look back at the person Jezebel in the Old Testament. In First Kings, chapter 18, we have three characters, not characters, but three people that appear. And I, I need to say this emphatically. The closer we get to the return of Jesus, the, the more evident end time spirits become. There are end time spirits that are demonic. There's a spirit of fear and heaviness that's attacking the world like never before today. And a lot of its momentum is gained through gossip on the internet and fear spread across social media. A lot of that momentum of that heavy spirit, which is leading some to suicide, many to depression, many to the bottle or back to the pills or, or to work more or consume more. Listen, there's a heaviness that the enemy wants. God says kickoff, then it put on us garment of praise, put on a spirit of praise. There's a spirit of the end time spirit that's called Jezebel. And it's a, it's not a woman. It's a spirit and a spirit that will possess either male or female. When we see this, this person, this Jezebel lady appear in the, way back in the book of First Kings in the Old Testament. So there's a godly Jewish king named King Ahab. And Ahab's responsibility is to lead God's people to holiness. But Ahab, against God's commands, marries a, a woman who's not Jewish from another pagan land. And he takes to him a, a wife on a deal with her dad to, to have some sort of political alignment and peace between two nations. So Jezebel doesn't have a choice in it. She doesn't want to marry Ahab. Ahab, she's kind of the spoils of the deal, if you will. And so, he marries this woman named Jezebel against God's will. And he brings into God's people, into God's land, her gods, her false gods. Jezebel worshiped two dominant gods. One was called Baal and one was called Asherah. And when they would worship Baal, they would set up altars in these high places that were reserved to worship Jehovah, but they would tear down those altars and erect these altars to Baal. And they would pray to Baal for crops and weather and harvest. And they, they would pray to Baal for favor and victory in war. And so, all of a sudden, Jezebel was teaching God's prophets and God's men and God's women to worship a false God. Then she would erect these poles in the middle of town. They were called Asherah poles. And they would dance around them erotically for fertility, to have babies and to, to be able to reproduce. And, and we see that today in a different form. It's called a stripper pole. It's the same thing. It's sexual perversion. So we would bring in these two false gods, one called Baal, one called Asherah. So Jezebel was teaching God's people how to worship false gods. So that end time spirit is still around today, teaching us to worship someone other than Jesus Christ, whether it's ourself, whether it's a, um, a different religion, whether it's power or money. And then it gets us to consume sexual perversion. And so, what God did is he rose up a guy named Elijah. So I want you to write down on your paper Elijah, because there's an Elijah spirit that is resting on men and women today. There's a strong Elijah spirit. So God brought Elijah as a prophet to the land. And he called the nation to a battle between Jezebel's gods and Jehovah God. And you can read all about it in First Kings, chapter 18. He takes 12 barrels of water. He pours it over this, this offering and God call it. And he calls down fire and God consumes the fire. But there was an Elijah that stood up to King Ahab and said, "Ahab, it's not right that you married someone else. It's not right that you're worshiping Baal. It's not right that you're allowing sexual perversion to rule and reign in God's kingdom. You need to return back to Jehovah." So in the end of days, there's a strong Elijah anointing that's resting on pastors. It's resting on prophets. It's resting on men and women to take a stand for holiness again, to not be silent, to not be shy. So Jezebel and Elijah war against each other. We see this again in the New Testament with a guy named John the Baptist. John the Baptist, in Matthew, chapter 11, verse 14, Jesus says, "Hey, if you'll believe it, John the Baptist is Elijah." And he's not talking reincarnation or anything. He's just saying the spirit of boldness is on this boy named John who's out in the desert, doesn't care what he's wearing, doesn't care what you think about him, but he's preaching truth. He's calling people to repentance and baptizing them in the river. And so, John takes a stand against Herod, who is, again, like Ahab, supposed to be the king of the Jews. He's supposed to be leading the Jewish people to holiness. But he starts to bring in false deities, false gods, and he marries his brother's wife. So he's in sexual perversion. So John the Baptist has the boldness and the audacity to call out the king and say, "King, it's not right what you're doing." So he takes a stand against this Jezebel spirit. And then we see Jesus bringing it back up in Revelation two. So I said a lot to say this, that there is a Jezebel spirit that is wanting God's men and women to consume demonic ideology. It comes in the form of very subtle, um, very, uh, um, small compromise. We start to tolerate language that God says, "Hey, don't, don't, don't repeat that gossip. Don't talk like that." We start to tolerate a little bit of idol worship. We start to tolerate worshiping money more than worshiping God. We start to worship our ego more than we worship God. We start to tolerate some false gospel. We start to tolerate things on our television that we're just allowing into our homes. We start to tolerate, uh, those movies that have other people's naked bodies on them. We start to tolerate sexual perversion. And so, that's what Jesus is telling us to the church of Thyretara, "Hey, listen, stop tolerating sin. Be like a, an a bold, a bold Elijah and take a stand against it. Because if you don't, you're gonna miss the mark. You're not going to achieve the destination that you're headed towards. You're gonna miss Jesus. You're gonna miss the revelation of Jesus Christ because we get consumed with our own sin, our own stuff." So look at it again. In verse 21, "I gave her time to repent." Listen, "I gave her time to repent of her sexual immorality." Listen, God's giving you time to repent. There may be some movies that you need to turn off. There may need some websites that you need to unsubscribe to. You may need to throw your smartphone away and get a dumb phone that can't access the internet. That's fine. Take a stand, be bold. Jesus says it's better to pluck out your eye and to enter heaven without an eye or without a hand than, than to let that sin prevent you from heaven. Listen, there's a time to take a stand. Pastors, there's a time for us to take a stand and preach the word of God from the pulpit again, not to be afraid of political correctness or, or what somebody else. We're not gonna tolerate somebody else's opinion. We have to allow the word of God to speak for itself. And so, that's what Jesus is saying. Church, quit tolerating other worship of false deities. Don't mix Jesus with a little bit of superstitious good luck. You know, don't be the Christian that says, "Hey, I'm just crossing my fingers. I'm knocking on wood." No, no, that's superstition. Don't, don't be the person that just sits there and go, "Well, you know, hey, listen, you know, God doesn't expect me to be perfect and this is how he made me and this is how I was born." Listen, that's why Jesus says, "Be born again. Get born again. Let God come in and wash you clean and make you into the manner woman that God's made you to be." So let's keep reading. Verse 23. Um, "Jesus says, 'And I will give to each one of you according to your works.'" We're gonna see in Revelation in around chapter 19 and 20, when we get there, that we're gonna be judged for our works. Jesus is bringing a correction to the church. So get ready for judgment. I don't know about you, but I don't know if today that I want to be judged today. If you think about it, if we died today and we went and we stood before Jesus today, are we ready for judgment? I don't know. I'm like, "Oh my God, Jesus, don't judge me yet. I need to forgive some people. Jesus, don't judge me yet. Man, I need to change some, some of the ways that I think, some of the things I'm doing." God, listen, there's a day that's coming that we will be judged for our works. That's why we're really studying this, because we gotta take the word of God serious. We've got a dumbed-down bumper sticker religion theology problem. We've got this ideology that, "Hey, just say the magic prayer, jump in the magic bathtub, get wet, and one day you'll go to heaven and we'll all grow wings and we'll sit on clouds and..." No, that's not biblical. The Bible says, "Man, God saved you to do works. He's given you one talent, two talents, five talents. He's got a purpose of, of, he's got value in you. There's a job for you to do. And we're gonna be judged according to our works." Listen to this, verse 24. "But to you, Cameron, I say, and to the rest of you in Thyretara, 'As many as you that do not have this doctrine.'" Listen, you may be saying, "Hey Cameron, I'm really not struggling with those areas." That's good. Jesus has got a workforce here too. "Those of you that are not struggling with this doctrine and you've not known the depths of Satan, as some would call it, I'll put no other burden, but hold fast to what you have till I come." Now, listen, here's the, here's the challenge to the overcomer. "To the overcomer and he who keeps my works until the end, I'll give him power over the nations." What? I'll give the overcomer the power to the nations. Listen, the Elijah spirit that rests on you is a spiritual anointing for the nation, for the United States nation, for the nations of the world. God needs you to be a spokesperson. He needs you to be a spokesperson on his behalf to the nation. There's a spirit of Jezebel that's attacking the nation. When a Jezebel spirit attacks, it brings confusion. It brings complacency. It brings apathy. It's a witchcraft spirit that, that brings, uh, just a fog. Listen, there's a boldness. There, there is a Jehu Elijah spirit. There's a boldness that's coming over you. And God's saying, "Listen, be decisive. Make decisions. Stand up. Clear the fog." One of the reasons people don't like our current president is because he's decisive. He's got a Jehu spirit. He, he drives out the enemy. Whether his decisions are right or wrong, good or bad, I'm not here to judge. But I'm saying that he's a Jehu. He's, he's a force that is bold and courageous as he makes his decisions. Don't allow a Jezebel spirit to low you to sleep, to accept theology that's not holy. Don't allow a Jezebel spirit to, uh, seduce you into compromise. One of the things that a Jezebel spirit does is it'll cause like, it always attacks the leaders. It always attacks the pastors, the baseball coach, the principal, the business owner. It always attacks the husband, the father, the leaders. And what that spirit does is it'll get us to compromise. It'll get us to, uh, be a little confused and wishy-washy. It'll say, "Hey, listen, it's okay. It's okay if you just take an extra $10 out of the cash register at work." Listen, man, remember you work a whole lot harder than everybody else. Just take that $10. It's okay. And then once you compromise, then it's got you. See, there's a lot of pastors who, you know, one day we wake up and, and they're sleeping with the church secretary and they run off with the money. Listen, somewhere long before that, they compromised. Listen, it's time to quit compromising. It's time to stand up for who you are and what you believe in. It's time to just be what God called you to be. It's time to be Elijah, to be bold. And the reward, if we'll do it here, is that we'll rule the nations with Jesus one day. And he says, verse 27, "You shall rule them with a rod of iron as the potter's vessel shall be broken into pieces. As also I have received from my father, I will give him the morning star. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit is saying to the churches." God wants you to rule and reign with him, not just one day in heaven, but today. So if you're a husband, take control of what your family's watching on TV again. If you're a mom, take control of what your children are doing. Hey, parents, take control and be the parents again. Tell the kids what to do. In love, men, it's time to lead again. It's time to not say, "Hey, honey, do you want to go to church?" No, take your family to church. Be the man of God that prays with his family. Be the man of God that leads his family spiritually. A lot of us men, we're good providers, man. We, we, we have a house. We have cars. Our kids are, families are fed and, but we're not leading spiritually. God says, "Listen, you're the spiritual leader. Be the leader again. Take a stand at work." Listen, it's not okay to cheat on our taxes. It's not okay to fudge the numbers, to get the sale at work. That's not bold Elijah leadership. That's compromising of a Jezebel spirit. Pastors, preach the word of God like never before. God's really been convicting me of that. Just preach the word of God. Let, let the word of God stand on its own. I don't have to, I don't have to, uh, soft sell it. I'm just telling it like it is. Amen? Amen. Let's go to the next church, the church of Sardis, chapter three. "And to the angel of the church of Sardis," And to the angel of the church of Sardis, write these things, says he who has the seven spirits of God and the seven stars. Listen, when Jesus says that he has the seven spirits of God and the seven stars, he's in control. He is in control of our church, he's in control of you, he's in control of our nation. He's in control, seven represents perfection and it represents that he's, he's God, he's not wondering what to do. He's not shocked, he didn't see, he didn't not, you know, God doesn't go, oh, I didn't see that one coming. No, God says, that's right on time, I knew its destination, I'm in control. Look at what he says, he says, this thing says, he who has the seven spirits of God and the seven stars, I know your works, that you have a name, that you are alive, but you are dead. Jesus says to this church, hey church, man, everybody thinks you got it together. But man, you're dead, there's no spirit in you. See, when, the thing about a funeral, when we go and we see a body in a casket, we, we, we mourn over the loss of our loved one. And the reason we're mourning is because we know there's no spirit in the shell. There's no spirit in the body. The church of Sardis is a sad church because it's a dead church. So as we look in our hearts, is there a part of my heart that's loved, lost its love? Is there a part of my heart that's compromising? Is there a part of my heart that's just corrupt? Is there another part of my heart that's dead? Listen, Jesus can bring dead things back to life, that's the good news, amen? Jesus doesn't care if you'll just acknowledge it, he'll bring life back to dead places. But he says this, he says, you have a name that you're alive, but you're dead. Some of our marriages, some people look at your marriage and they go, man, that's a marriage, they're, they got it together. But you know the real story behind closed doors, it's dead. Some of you, you're driving fancy cars, you're living in a nice house, you're dressing nice. But, but, and people think you got a lot of money and you got it all together, but the truth is you're about a paycheck away from bankruptcy, because the finances are dead. Some of you got it, you, you're the best actor or actress in the world. And as soon as you get away from the game and you put on the good face behind closed doors, you wish you were dead. See, there's this condition of the church that we look alive. I mean, we've got a great youth program, we've got a great Bible school coming on, we've got great men's groups, we're doing mission trips. But we lost the spirit, God's saying, listen, bring back the Holy Spirit, bring back the spirit of God. I know that you have a name, that you're alive, but you are dead. Be watchful Cameron, strengthen the things which remain that are ready to die, for I have not found your works perfect before God. God is perfecting what we do, he's all about works. I know you don't, I know you didn't know that, God cares about what you do, you're gonna be held accountable, I'm telling us, oh my God. Three, remember therefore, how you have received and heard, hold fast Cameron and repent. Hold on to what you have and repent. Therefore, if you will not watch, I will come upon you as a thief and you will not know which hour I will come upon you. Listen, he says, if you will not watch. The reason for this show is that we are watching for Jesus Christ. I want to remind you of this. And I so appreciate your time. Back when Jesus walked the earth, every Sabbath, thousands upon thousands of Jews would go into the synagogue and would worship Jehovah God. And they would say, God, I love you, Jehovah, you got my heart, I love you, yeah. But when Jesus showed up, they said, I hate you, Jesus. Hate crucify that guy. How, how did they miss Jesus? Cause they didn't really love God. If we don't, if they didn't really love God, they missed Jesus. But the ones that really loved God, they saw God in Jesus. So many of us in our churches today going, Jesus, yeah. And we're clapping and we're singing and, and the preacher starts to preaching, it depends on what kind of church you go to. You may be going, amen, or you may be going, yeah, I don't know, but, but you're saying amen. But so many of us are proclaiming that we love Jesus. But man, when the Holy Spirit walks in and does something that we don't know and we've never seen before, we, we reject the Holy Spirit. So Jesus says, if you reject the Holy Spirit, you don't really love me. No different than the ones that rejected me, didn't really love God. If I love God, I'll receive Jesus, and if I love Jesus, I'll receive the Holy Spirit. And the Holy Spirit is what brings life to my dead place. So he says, be on guard, watch for what God's doing. Yeah, well, but, but that guy, man, he, 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 he doesn't dress the way that that preacher should dress. And he doesn't, he's got tattoos and, and I, you know, I don't know, man, that guy, he, listen, the Holy Spirit in other people may not look like what you want it to look like. But if you know Jesus, you'll know his spirit. So watch for him, if not, he'll be on you like a thief. He'll be on you like a thief. Here we go. Uh, verse four, you have a few names even in Sardis who have not defiled their garments. That's the Holy Spirit, God's put on you a garment of holiness, don't defile it, don't, don't cast your pearls before the pigs. Don't, don't go do the things that you used to do. You're different, you don't belong in that bar, you don't belong in that relationship. You don't belong in that dark suicidal place, you don't belong there anymore. Don't defile yourself, be holy, be what God created you to be. Verse five, this is where it gets scary. And I'm gonna read verse five very slowly, word for word, because I get excited and I start to skip over some things. But I'm reading out of the New King James Version. But listen to what it says, it says, he who overcomes, it's a good thing. He who overcomes shall be clothed in white garments. And I will not, listen to this, and I will not blot out his name from the book of life. What? He who overcomes shall be clothed in white garments and I will not blot out his name that is written in the Lamb's book of life. See, in other places it says, I will write his name into the book of life. Oh preacher, you're stepping on my theology, I'm not, the word of God is. Read it for yourself. Listen, I don't want God blot my name out. Here's the thing, listen to the verse in whole. He who overcomes shall be clothed in white garments and I will not blot out his name from the book of life. But I will confess his name before my father and before his angels. Let me tell you the day I'm waiting, and let me paint, paint the picture like this. Pick, pick your favorite politician, your favorite movie star, your favorite, uh, rock star, your favorite, um, business person. And, and if you could have the opportunity to meet them and, and you got to sit down with them at Starbucks for a couple hours. If you're like me, you might think, man, I really wish I could be their friend all the time. And let's just say that you got to meet, you know, your favorite movie star, your favorite, you know, musician or politician or whatever. And you spend some time with them and they said, hey, what are you doing after this? I know we've been at Starbucks for a couple hours. Hey man, I'm having a party with my best friends, uh, I mean, I want you to come to the party with me. And, and you're like, yeah, man, oh yeah, yeah, no, I, yeah, I ain't got nothing, let's go. So you jump in the car with this person that you really look up to. And they take you to a party and you walk into the door and let's just pretend there's 50 people, well, yeah, over, over 10. Let's pretend that there's 50 people there at the party and they're all these famous athletes or movie stars or politicians. These are the friends of your, of your, you know, your, your person that you really look up to. Wouldn't it be cool if they said, hey, everybody, I need your attention, everybody, quiet down, quiet down. I want to introduce to you my new best friend, Cameron Corbin, yeah. See, that would make you feel good. Listen to what it says, it says, I won't blot out your name from the book of life, but I'll confess your name before my father and his angels. How cool will it be? If you'll confess Jesus here on earth, whether it's popular or not. If you'll stand up for Jesus, how cool it'd be that one day you walk into heaven's home with God, with Jesus. And he says, hey dad, be quiet, Gabriel, calm down, Michael, be quiet, everybody be quiet. I want to introduce to you my best friend. See, I don't know about you, but that's a reward and it pushes me. So that when I stand up for Jesus at work and some people are like, oh. That's okay, because I know one day Jesus will stand up for me. See, it's, it, it, it's this, it's pushing us. So if there's a part of you that's dead, let Jesus bring it back to life. He who has an ear, let him hear what the spirit of the church, the spirit is saying to the churches. I want to say thank you for your time tonight, I want to say thank you that you, um, are blessed. I want to say that God has a plan, God has a purpose. These seven churches are seven conditions of your heart. These seven churches are seven potential conditions of the worldwide church. These seven churches are seven, uh, potential conditions of the church that you go to on Sunday morning or your friends or the, the family group that you hang out with. It's an inward look, it's introspective. Don't read Revelation and go, oh, those people over there. Here's what we're gonna find out later in Revelation. There is an Antichrist that's coming and he'll, or he'll, he'll arise out of the beast system. And he will play off the condition of people's hearts. He'll lead them to greed, he'll lead them to sexual perversion, he'll lead them to ideology or idol worship. He'll, he'll lead them to selfishness and angst and anger and prejudice. He'll lead them to sinful conditions in their heart, where the Antichrist can't lead you is to where the Holy Spirit will lead you. So the reason Jesus starts the book of Revelation with this challenge to believers is that we'll get our hearts right with Jesus. So today is the day that it's time for us to look inwardly and say, man, am I tolerating a spirit of perversion? Have I bought demonol- demon ideology, demon theology? That says, hey, it's okay, just do whatever you want, God just wants you to be happy. He doesn't want us to be happy, he wants us to be holy. He wants us to be set apart for him. God's saying this, test your heart. Is your heart on fire for Jesus? Is it compromising, is it corrupt, is it dead? I don't know, but I ask myself that. And the truth is, I think it's a daily look. Daily, sometimes my, my heart compromises, someday I just give in to sin. And I'm like, oh, God, forgive me. Remember to repent, repent. Let's pray this. Um, as we close, I want to say thank you for your time tonight, we'll be back with you tomorrow night at 6:30. We'll finish up chapter three and, uh, and I promise you all this building, this foundation is gonna be worth it as we get to the end of Revelation. But let me ask you this question, does Jesus Christ live in your heart? If Jesus Christ, if you were entering heaven today and, and, and at the pearly gates, St. Peter says, okay Cameron, stand up, we're gonna put you through the heart detector. Uh, what, did you mean metal detector, like I ain't got no guns, no, 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 the heart detector. What do you mean the heart, yeah, God's gonna analyze your heart real quick. We're gonna see if your heart lost its love for him or if your heart is compromising or if your heart's corrupt or is a dead, hey, let's put you through the heart detector. So if I was entering heaven, what would my heart look like? What's the EKG, EKG of heaven look like on my heart? So if you don't know Jesus, pray with me, Jesus, come into my heart. If you know Jesus, say, Jesus, come into my heart. Jesus analyzes my heart. Gotta give you permission to convict me and bring me to repentance. Repentance is more than just, oh, I'm sorry, oh, I screwed up, no, no. Repentance is, oh Jesus, I don't want to hurt you, oh Jesus, get me out of this. God's a God that's gonna deliver you, amen? Love you, God bless you. If you need Jesus in your heart, just ask him, it's that simple, there's no magic words. If you ask Jesus in your heart or you need us to pray with you, go to our website, Whitestone Church TX, there's a contact page. Um, man, we got resources for you, there's pastors all over town, there's really strong, good churches in Austin. And, uh, just because you're listening to this, man, we'll send you and help you, help you get plugged into whatever church God's calling you to. So God bless you, we'll see you again tomorrow night, 6:30, thanks for coming, bye.